Who are consultants who helped write the environmental document for this project. We will go over some of the project description and the EIR process before coming back to me. And then I'll finish up with some of the actions before your board. Effectively, in front of you, we're going to talk about the State Route 20 Kibbe Road Intersection Improvement Project. This, this project is a project that's been proposed by Tykert. Tykert Construction owns a and processing facility in the community of Hallwood. It's referred to as the Hallwood Mine. Currently, the Hall Route to this mine goes through the community of Hallwood, specifically the streets of Hallwood Boulevard and Walnut Avenue. So all of the truck traffic coming to and from the side are going through the community of Hallwood. Tykert is seeking to alleviate the traffic impacts to Hallwood by creating a new private Hall Route and taking the Hall Trucks from the community of Hallwood and putting them straight onto Highway 20. As part of this Hall Route project, permit that will allow them to do the work and connect in the 20. This project has a lot of history on this. I'm sure there'll be speakers after me that have much more history on the project than I do. But effectively, this, this project's about 20 years in the making. In 2003, the idea of this, this project came to the county through Tykert. And they worked on a EIR that your board approved in 2006. Subsequently, that EIR was challenged in court and the court overturned a couple of the sections in the EIR and asked to get, do some revisions on these sections. And then the crash of 2007, 2008 happened and Tykert decided to put the project on hold. However, in October of 2020, Tykert submitted a grading permit plan to the Public Works Department, which started this process up again. As part of that grading permit, county staff determined that an additional EIR would be required, which we started at that point going through in the EIR process. With that, that's a little bit of, excuse me, that's a little bit of the background on why we're here. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Rod Stinson with Rainey Planning, who was the consulting firm the county hired to prepare the environmental impact report. And Rod's going to go over some of the project description in more detail and also the steps that we've taken as part of the EIR process.
Thanks, Kevin. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Rod Stinson with Rainey Planning and Management. Give you a brief overview of the project and the Sequa process as you mentioned. In this slide here, you can see that the Hallwood Mine is located east of Marysville. And the existing Hall Road is highlighted here in yellow. And the red section is the proposed project where the, the new connection is proposed to occur to Highway 20. This, this here is a zoom in on the proposed project section. The yellow in this case is the previously constructed Hall Road. So it's already in existence and the red portion is the component of the project that is to be constructed and was analyzed in the, in the EIR. The proposed project includes intersection improvements to State Route 20 and Kibbe Road intersection to connect to the private Hall Road that existed or exists to the south. Includes the westerly realignment of Kibbe Road north of State Route 20 to connect to the relocated intersection. There will be a left turn pocket for westbound traffic on SR 20 to head south. There would be the installation of 12-foot shoulders on both sides of State Route 20 to the west of the proposed intersection. Excuse me. National improvements as determined by Caltrans. A stop sign, traffic signal, or a roundabout. And all three were analyzed in the EIR. The next few slides here will show what those layouts look like. Layouts one and two are for the stop control and signalized options. The, the alignments of the, of the intersection essentially are the same. And then the last would be for a roundabout. And this is what that would look like. All three were analyzed in the EIR and the conclusions were based on which option would essentially be the most impactful. So jumping into the Sequa process, once the application was submitted and the lead agency, Uba County, decided to prepare an EIR, the first step is to prepare a notice of preparation, which is released for a public review period of 30 days. And within those 30 days, a scoping meeting was held, in this case, May 12th. The hearing was, was held. At the close of that 30-day period, the draft EIR is prepared and released for public review. The public review period under Sequa is a 45-day public review period. And in this instance, because the review period spanned the Christmas holidays, the county determined that, you know, we should expand those 45 days to 55. So the public was given 10 more days than was required under Sequa. At the close of the comment period, comment letters were received and were responded to and included in the final EIR, which was released in April of this year. And then the following items there are the hearing on the project and why we're here today. So a brief overview of the conclusions of the EIR. The EIR included the following chapters: air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, noise, and transportation. The EIR included mitigation measures to reduce potential impacts to biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, noise, and transportation. The EIR concluded that with implementation of those mitigation measures, all potential impacts would be reduced to a less than significant impact. And therefore, the EIR did not find that there would be any significant and unavoidable impacts as a result of the proposed project. In addition, the EIR included an evaluation of three alternatives. Sequa requires that there is a no-project alternative analyzed. And in addition to that, there was an existing alignment alternative and the Cardua Canal alternative. In the evaluation, Sequa requires that the EIR identify the environmentally superior alternative. It's called, and it's an evaluation of just those alternatives. And the existing alignment alternative was identified as the environmentally superior alternative. I would note, however, that the existing alignment alternative resulted in similar impacts to the proposed project as the proposed project results in less than significant impacts with mitigation included. So essentially, they're, they're during the draft EIR public comment period, two verbal comments were received during the hearing that was held, well, as four written comments. All were responded to in the final EIR. In addition, subsequent to drafting of the final EIR, two additional letters were received, as noted here on the slide. We reviewed those additional letters and have concluded that all, all the comments that were brought up were already responded to either in the draft EIR or as part of the responses in the final EIR. And with that, I'll turn it back to Kevin.
All right, I want to say Rod. Next, I want to talk, go over the, the actions your board would need to make today. You know, again, this, this presentation, if there's any questions you guys might have about the, the EIR, please answer that or ask them when we're done with our presentation. The EIR and the final EIR are a few hundred pages long. So I don't want to go over a lot of details with you guys if, if you don't care to go over all those details. So the actions before you in the resolution are to certify the EIR, approve the mitigation monitoring plan, which is what Rod spoke about, what we have in place to ensure that the project has impacts that are less than significant with the applied mitigation, adopt the Sequa findings, which are what justifies what we did in the project approval process and how we went about the process correctly. And also approve the grading permit PWGR, which stands for Public Works GR Grading 20, which is the year 0020, which is the permit number. So those are the four actions that we would like you to make. There's a couple of things that I want to talk to you about before ending my presentation and giving an opportunity to a representative of Tykert to present to your board before we open up the comments to your board. There's a couple of things I do want to note. I did, as Rod mentioned, we did receive two comments from the public after the final EIR was released. And Rainey Management did provide a memo that I provided to Mary that will just, that she'll hand out to you guys to ensure that that memo is part of the record. They, Rainey did find that there was nothing in the letters that required an additional response to either the draft EIR or the final EIR. So there's that. And also, I want to discuss, there's a clerical error on page three of Exhibit 1. So Exhibit 1 is the Sequa findings and of, page three of Exhibit 1 of the resolution, excuse me. Exhibit 1 is, is the Sequa findings. And on that page, I made a clerical error where it should state that the FEIR was released on April 8, 2022. And your board hearing for the item was today, which is April 26, 2022. So as part of any motion that you make today, if you do make a motion to adopt the Sequa findings, I ask you that motion to be, to adopt an amended Sequa findings and state the, the two dates, April 8th for the FEIR release and April 26th for the board hearing. One last thing I do want to discuss that if your board were to approve this project, there still are a few additional approvals that will be needed. Caltrans will need to approve an encroachment permit to allow the project improvements to be done on their highway system. The applicant has already started that process with Caltrans. And I do, do believe there, there could be some environmental permitting that would be needed. I do believe it's just a Central Valley flood protection permit. So, but there, there could be some other environmental permitting that, that are needed as well. But as part of that project, all of those agencies would utilize the Sequa EIR for their environmental approval for their actions as well. So I'm done with my presentation. I'd like to offer Michael Smith of Tykert the ability to say a few words to your, your board before your board open up questions for staff and entertain the, the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Michael Smith from Tykert. Thank you very much, Kevin and Rod, for doing such a great overview. I'll keep my comments as brief as possible since they deliberated on most of the items. I think maybe just for starters to state that, so our Hallwood Plan, which wasn't mentioned, is a best at right. It's been around since the 50s. Obviously, we've, our business has picked up as the neighborhood has picked up. So the time is right to, to maybe make some changes out there, which is why we decided to proceed forward. I won't go into the history because I know others have, have talked about that and others will talk about that. But maybe just a couple of quick comments on, I, I wanted to make sure folks understood that in the interim, when this idea or when this, the issues were raised again a couple of years ago, we immediately put in place some additional measures on Walnut and Hallwood to try and help alleviate some of the concerns of the neighborhood. Obviously, they weren't the end-all, but we've, we've added electronic signs, speed signs out on both Walnut and Hallwood to help try and contain the truck speeds. We've added a pilot car, which is running up and down those streets as well, pulling trucks over. We're citing them if they're not abiding by the rules. So we, we tried to do as much as we can in the interim, but we're very hopeful we can move forward with the, the new Kibbe Road Highway 20 intersection. I think also of importance to us was the idea that after all these years of working on this, that the EIR determined not only that there were no significant unavoidable impacts, but that our project as proposed is actually a better alternative than what exists out there right now. I think that's something in my history of doing this for 30-some years, I don't know that I've ever had a project where that has been the result. So that was kind of nice to see. As mentioned, we've, we've got a couple of alternatives that have been evaluated. In particular, they're only a few feet apart. They deal with different landowners. Once any actions are taken today, we'll immediately work with those landowners to try and work out any acquisitions or right-of-way that we need to be to complete this. Beyond that, I, I, like I said, I think everything has been covered. I, I would like to say a thank you to all the neighbors who have worked with us diligently for the last couple of years for their patience. It hasn't always been smooth, but we've always had the right thing in mind, which was try to make the situation better. And then also to thank staff. And I should also mention too, I've got some, some consultants here that have been part of our team. Jesse Yang from Taylor &amp; Wiley, our land use attorney. Carlton Allen with Bennett Engineering, who's designed our roads. And David Stanek and David Manciotti, who isn't here, but from a Farron Peers that have worked diligently with Caltrans to try and understand, try to figure out what is the best scenario for a new roadway to be put in. And I think it is important to note that the, the intersection that, that we are proposing to do would be a full signalized intersection. I think we hopefully have convinced Caltrans that roundabouts and large trucks don't work very well. So the signalized intersection would be the preferred route, which will also help slow down some of the speeds along that road, which has been an issue with some of the neighbors. It also, and I think it goes without saying, anybody who has ever driven Hallwood Avenue and tried to make a left turn onto 20 with some of those trucks, that is probably one of the most dangerous situations out there. This will help alleviate that by moving the majority of those trucks to a signalized intersection, which allows them to get into a queue. And then I think just lastly, a lot of the safety features were mentioned. The one that wasn't is the idea that as part of this proposal, we would put in a bus stop on the south side of Kibbe Road, which has always been an issue for folks out there as the kids were dropped off on, I'm sorry, on 20. They were dropped off on the north side and had to make a run for it across the street. So having a second bus stop in there as part of that intersection should help folks out. Beyond that, we are more than happy to answer any questions. We thank you for your time 20 years later. I, I should also just acknowledge Supervisor Schrader, who's in the audience today, who was part of this process many, many years ago and convinced us to go forward with it at the, at the first go-around. And then thanks to Supervisor Fletcher, who we've worked very closely with on the second round. So with that, thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. So I will open the public hearing. Questions from the board?
Could this be done under one motion or do we need four separate?
There will be some, there will be some discussion, but I suspect it could be done if it's a complete. Is that correct?
It, it could be done as one motion so long as you articulate each of the actions being taken.
I think this is a great idea.
Through the chair? This is just a clarification question. Kibbe Road is now designated or would be designated as a private Hall Road, correct? As opposed to a public road or?
So, so right now, at, at the intersection of Kibbe and Highway 20, the, right now, this is being proposed as a private Hall Route. So Tykert owns the property. It'll be a private Hall Route for Tykert, two Tykert vehicles to hit Highway 20. On the north end of Highway 20, Kibbe Road, that section is a, is a public road.
Right. Okay, so it's not open to public traffic at all on the Hall Road?
The, the south intersection or the, from the intersection going south that we're talking about for this Hall Route, it would not be for public transportation.
Okay, I guess that's the only question. Thanks.
Comments from the public? Or questions?
We do have a comment. Okay, first person we have is Don Schrader.
A good example of no good deed goes unpunished. 2002, after working with a lady by the name of Lily Noble, who worked at Tykert for many years, we were getting constant complaints. You got to understand, Tykert at times works 24 hours a day. They pave roads at night, so there's trucks going up and down that road 24 hours a day. So I approached Lily Noble with the idea of going out, going straight out to Highway 20. And she said she'd get back to me and she got back to me and said, yeah, if they can get the right-of-way, they would be glad to do it. Well, the north portion, the south portion was no problem. Wayne Springer's lived on that road and he's put up those trucks forever. The north portion of that property presented a challenge. That property belonged to a gentleman by the name of Sam Schentappen. And in Sam's entire life, he never sold a piece of property in Uba County. He just bought it all. So unfortunately, I'd gotten to be pretty good friends with Sam. We took him to breakfast one morning and he said, I presented the process and he immediately said, I'm not going to sell you my property. I don't want, I don't want to sell property. So I decided it was best just to keep my mouth shut. So we came back to town and he said, got out of the truck and he said, I'll go look at this, Don, and, and I'll get back to you. So he got back to me about two days later. I saw him driving down the road and stopped, parked in my driveway and talked to me. He said, when's the county, is the county still interested in this project? I said, wait a minute, Sam, county's not doing this. I said, it's Tykert doing this. And I've thought about that ever since. If the county would have tried to buy this property, they would have paid a million dollars for it and they wouldn't have been able to buy it because Sam wouldn't sell it. I'll guarantee you that. So anyway, I got Sam, I got, Lily got ahold of me about two weeks later and said, Sam agreed to sell the property. So in 2003, this road was built. It's 20 feet away from Highway 20. Little did we know that there was going to be lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit trying to stop this project. One of the problems that I had at the time is the 5th District Supervisor was opposed to this. So not only were we fighting some of the people on Kibbe Road, but we're fighting, I was fighting supervisor. So the road is done. The people in Hallwood deserve to get those trucks out of Hallwood. It's taken 20 years. That road has been completed for 19 years. And it's the right thing to do at the right time. I, I would sincerely hope that nobody else files a lawsuit. But one of the things I've learned in all my time in Uba County that no matter what the city wants to do or what the county wants to do or what the, what Caltrans wants to do, somebody's going to sue. Take Highway 70, for example. So, you know, I would, I would hope that the board stands behind this, that they, you get a 5-0 vote and send this thing forward and allow the people in Hallwood to rest at night and during the day to get these trucks out of Hallwood. Anybody got any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
That is all the cards.
That's all the cards.
I ask for leniency on the time because I am speaking for some in the crowd. If I could have everybody here from the Hallwood community that's in favor of the project, please stand up. And as you know, because of the hours, most people outwork. So I'm, I'm sure you saw on the record, we collected 113 signatures that were submitted from the Hallwood community. But I will start. My name's Iri Douglas. I live in the community of Hallwood and we've been subjected to Tykert's operations for many years. If you have not driven the current route, I ask you to please come drive the route and see what we've been subjected to all times of the day and night. The community is a very quiet rural neighborhood. And as Tykert's grown, so has our neighborhood with more homes and additional children. The community of Hallwood has many concerns with the Hall Route. And we voice our concerns to Tykert and they've taken it upon themselves to listen to the community and help us and pursue the new route. I have reviewed the FEIR, FEIR, and I have worked with the community of Hallwood to collect the following comments. The many concerns that we have will be eliminated with the new Highway 20 and Kibbe Road project. Our neighborhood has a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, which is intended for local residential traffic, not heavy truck tractor traffic. Our roads are not constructed for vehicles of such gross vehicle weight or size. The semi trucks are constantly veering off the roadway into our yards, destroying sprinklers, headlines, knocking over mailboxes, and very sadly, killing our pets. Sometimes the semi trucks never stop because they never notice they hit anything. The FEIR shows the decimal level the trucks are creating exceeds the decimal level the county sees fit for a rural residential zone and is more suitable and acceptable in a state highway system. The noise pollution the semi trucks create has become a public and private nuisance. The semi trucks' decimals and the volume of truck traffic has taken the enjoyment and peacefulness of our properties from us. Uba County had placed a traffic counter and found that there was 9,100 vehicles on Hallwood and Walnut Boulevard during the busy season. I would say 90% of that is Tykert's operations. That kind of traffic does not belong in our neighborhood and belongs on a thoroughfare or highway system constructed and intended for such traffic. The state highway system is constructed and built for vehicles of such gross vehicle weight and size and the posted speed limit is intended for goods movement such as aggregate trucks. Tykert has tried to alleviate some of the problems the semi trucks create, but the full problem will not be gone until the semis are in their proper space, the highway. The safety of our community is being jeopardized by the heavy amount of semi truck traffic. The FEIR shows the new route of Highway 20 and Kibbe Road is actually less miles traveled, which means less pollution to the air and faster aggregate material delivery. Currently, when the Tykert plant is not open, the semi trucks line the State Highway 20 at Walnut Avenue and Hallwood Boulevard. The semis lining the Highway 20 causes a very dangerous line of sight issue, not only for those entering the highway, but those also driving the highway. The new route will allow the semi trucks to avoid idling on the highway and now provides a safe alternative of idling at the plant gate on the long private road. Being the trucks already idle on the highway, there will be no more or greater impact to the environment from the idling trucks, just a safer place for them to do so. The FEIR also shows that Tykert is proposing a traffic signal at the Highway 20 and Kibbe Road per Caltrans standards. Along with the traffic signal, Tykert will be installing a second bus stop so schoolchildren do not need to cross the highway. Another major enhancement to the intersection will be lanes for the semi trucks to properly accelerate and decelerate. Caltrans has completed previous work to the intersection and deems the intersection not blind and safe for residents and travelers. The traffic signal will further control the speed of the highway, bringing an increased amount of safety to those living near the intersection. In conclusion, the approval and construction of a new Highway 20 and Kibbe Road intersection will eliminate the need for the heavy truck tractors to drive our rural neighborhood. The new route will bring an increased amount of safety, not only to the Hallwood community, but also to those traveling the state highway. The new route will bring less pollution to the air and bring back the enjoyment of our properties. It is our understanding that all the costs involved with both processing this request as well as implementation of the improvements will be the sole responsibility of Tykert, meaning no taxpayer dollars are going into the project. The following closing comments from the community of Hallwood is that we believe the FEIR is quite thorough and accurately and technically addresses any and all concerns raised by the project and that the proposed Kibbe Road project is superior in every way to the current Hall Route and no significant and unavoidable impacts are noted as a result of the proposed Kibbe Road. We urge you to say yes to opening the new road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Kevin, any final comments for the board?
Yes, one last comment. I, I do want to remind you about the, the Sequa findings that if your board does want to make those Sequa findings, that the findings should be to amend the Sequa findings for the final EIR release date of being April 8, 2022 and the board hearing date as April 26, 2022. One note that I do want to make is we did notice this hearing to all the neighbors within 1,000 feet, or I think it was actually a quarter mile on this. And within 1,000 feet, or I think it was actually a quarter mile on this, and we also noticed all agencies that provided comments or anyone that provided comments on the project, and the legal notice did reflect today's one as well. So I want to leave you guys with that. I'm here to answer any other questions you guys might have.
The two dates, April 8th and?
April 8th would be the release date for the final EIR, and April 26 would be the date the board heard the final EIR certification.
Questions from the board? Just a comment I would like to make to the public. I really appreciate your patience in all of the last couple of years. Between COVID and miscellaneous other items, it's taken a long time, and I realize it's been almost 20 years. Should have passed back then, should have gone through, should have never got tied up in court, but it did. So again, I appreciate your patience. And Tyker, you are a great partner. Thank you very much for stepping up to this. It's a joy working with a good partnership, so thank you.
Back to the board.
I will move to adopt resolution certifying final environmental impact report, approving mitigation monitoring plan, adopting CEQA findings, and approving permit PWGR-0020 for State Route 20 and Kibbe Road intersection project with the amended dates of 4/8 and 4/26.
Second. I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fier?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher.
And for Don's benefit, hell, yes. I believe that concludes today's meeting and adjournment.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.